Good evening. Welcome to the, welcome on day here, November 15th Board Retreat. We are here for the purpose of the beginning discussion of our strategic plan update work. So I'll just jump right in. To our board members that are present this evening, we have one board member that is on his way, so he will be joining us just within a few minutes. But we're going to go ahead and get started. Our meeting tonight will be, our scheduled time is 3:30 to 5:30. We want to start on time. We're about starting on time, but we plan to end on time. I would like to thank the members of the board for setting aside many responsibilities they have, their work life, their family life, personal life, to start this retreat a little early. Sacrifices were made to be here, and so we want to honor that, and so that's why we will be finishing at 5:30 this evening. We have several meetings planned for the future to continue this work. This is just our first time to really get into and discuss this. So we're all very anxious to hear from our consultant this evening. So just if you'll pop up the slide, Tammy, or we, we have something we need to take care of first.
Jim's slide.
Jim's slide. Yeah. Springfield Public School Strategic Plan. There we go. That one. And then the next one? Our purpose and our non-purpose, I'm sorry, I need to introduce.
I'm looking through slides.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So our purpose is to begin our dialogue and prioritize our potential SMART goals for the strategic plan. And I did want to throw on a non-purpose, just as a reminder. This will probably, hopefully will help us kind of stay on track with where we are headed for this meeting. There he is.
That's taken.
Welcome.
Lucky me.
Our draft, to draft and develop strategies and action steps with the strategic plan. That's not for tonight, but we will be working toward that. And then also to review the process utilized, to collect feedback by the consultants. If you will recall, and I have a, you know, if you want to see this, if you recall back at our board meeting on October 25th, Dr. Hackenworth went over with us in detail, engaged, the engagement highlights from the focus groups and the interviews of the process that EGL completed to collect all the feedback, their process timeline, the focus groups and interviews, the engagement highlights. So if you need to, board need to refresh your memory, I can pass this around. I have copies for everyone, but we all sat through this presentation, and so we, hopefully we don't need to spend time going back and discussing that tonight, but, because we want to focus on what they heard tonight. So at this time, I would like to invite, or one other thing I'll say with my, I'm sorry. Go ahead, come up, Jim. I apologize. But, so one other thing is we keep in mind as we hear this important information this evening, we are here till 5:30, so we expect about a one-hour presentation, and I would ask the board that will give us plenty of time then to begin our dialogue and our discussion and our asking questions and making comments. But keep in mind that there's seven of us, and if we take that next hour and we divide that by seven, that means that each of us, just be mindful of our time so that we all have an opportunity to ask those questions and make our comments, and we might find as we go around the table, we all have very similar questions, and they will all be answered, and there's no need to repeat. So just keep, we'll just keep moving. So, okay. And we would like to invite to speak to us, Dr. Henson. We're so happy to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Frederick. It's good to be with you, and it's really good to be with you, contrary to some other things that I might be doing right now. So I will just give you a little warning. By the way, I'm assuming I need to stay stationary, microphone, I can't really do my normal walk and everything else. So it's great to be with you. If I twist or turn wrong and I wince, it is not because of your question. Okay? So we're still dealing with a few issues there, so please don't take that inappropriately whatsoever. So I'm going to cover a lot of information with you tonight, so as a reminder, we have the Missouri School Improvement Process. We have the Continuous School Improvement Plans that are required by the state, and as you've seen before, your performance is 70 percent. But then if you look at the bottom part, your Continuous Improvement Standards, 30 points or 30 percent of your accreditation in this regard. And so requirement from the state, this is how it is broken down. Again, this isn't new information to you. The standards and indicators, again, those requirements, it's required to be developed in meaningful collaboration, not defined, but meaningful collaboration, internal, external. As you witnessed here in the district, the local board ensures that the CSIT focuses on the academic preparation, then the well-being of each student. Again, well-being has yet to be defined by the state. The MSEP standards and indicators. So when we talk about the standards, the key standards, the only standards from the state, L for Leadership, Teaching and Learning, Collaborative Climate and Culture, Database Decision Making, Alignment of Standards Curriculum and Assessment, and then Equity and Access. So any goal that is adopted by the board has to be identified to one of the standards and indicators as required by the state. Now those standards and indicators are pretty broad, though for example, under leadership would be a facilities or a safety and security plan. So I wouldn't worry about, okay, we have to make sure that this goal falls under leadership. Again, they are broad enough, most everything can flow through there. But in the final product, you will see a reference to your goals, to leadership standards and indicators. Okay? All right. So the process, and we won't go through all of this in detail, but the process was not only in person, also obviously there were surveys, thought exchange, so that process included internal and external stakeholders in the process. So one of the things that I want to break down for you is in relation to, how do we as a group of individuals really try to synthesize all the information that we hear? So there were a dozen of us in the district collectively, about 430 years of experience in public education from those 12 individuals. So you can say, okay, y'all are really long in the tooth, or whatever you might say, but, so we took about 430 years of experience saying, what is it we really heard? So everybody takes notes individually, and then everybody takes those notes individually. I don't see the notes, they convert them to themes. I don't see the buildings. Then those themes go to our core group and say collectively, what did we hear in relation to themes from the stakeholders? So process in relation to qualitative information. As a reminder, you know, quantitative is really your database decision-making, okay, this is where we scored as a district in third grade. So those things we can really break down to a numerical value, the quantitative, qualitative, what we heard, process, themes, then continue to break those down into themes of which you see in front of you tonight. What you will see at the end of each sentence is in relation to the standard that it would fall under. Now, before I go through all of the themes, so process, so tonight we're going to talk about themes, we're going to talk about initial steps in relation to goals. Initial steps. So we are not finalizing goals, we're not approving a plan tonight, we're not doing any of that. Then Dr. Lathan's going to talk to you in a few minutes about what happens next for board input and response, and an opportunity for you to say, well, we didn't see this theme, but we think it's really important. So this is not the finalization of anything, I want to make that really clear tonight. Okay? So finalization in relation to what we heard, the need for consistency and lack of clear systems and processes. Under that standard, implementation of curriculum and initiatives with fidelity. Certainly there have been, from what we heard, initiatives that were implemented by the district that necessarily were not implemented consistently or with fidelity in buildings. Buildings leader, building leaders made some decisions, they were going to do this or they were not going to do this. So you see the indicator in relation to implementation of curriculum initiatives with fidelity. Concerns expressed on the perceived autonomy of leaders at their individual sites, really closely aligned, but again, I want to make it very clear, some building leaders following district initiatives and some not following district initiatives, or maybe not following the initiative with the fidelity the district had desired. Next one is in relation to continued focus on alignment. So from our stakeholder input, theme in relation to you have individuals or buildings or programs doing what they wanted to do in spite of or regardless of the district initiative or direction. Number two is review and restructure of district leadership team primarily at the mid-level. So conversations in relation to, does the district have too many administrators? Do we have too many administrators really at that middle level? How can the district better take resources spent on those compensation packages and put those resources back into the classroom? As a part of number two, was also mixed messaging occurring to the building level from the district office structure. So concerns what one administrator would give in relation to direction, another administrator, district level would give different direction. So really desire in this regard to continue to look at the restructuring that Dr. Lathan has already started, because a desire from your constituency that this is the right thing to occur, and let's restructure a district administrative team slash staff. Now, I didn't forewarn you, some of these will be painful to some individuals. Okay? And so that's one of those in that regard. Number three incorporates a number of different areas. Human resources functioning, and again, I'm going to compliment Dr. Lathan, District, this is something that's underway, but you'll see specifics in this regard. There is concern in Springfield, in each school district, certainly in our state, and probably in most states in the country, about effectively not only recruiting the personnel you need, but also retaining the personnel. So that is not an exception from the stakeholder input. How do we continue to recruit? How do we retain our employees as well specifically in this regard, mainly our teachers? So recruitment and retention could be something that's a separate goal, and you may say through this process, we really want that cut out, but right now, it's under human resources. Concern in relation to the hiring process, how long it would take to get someone employed in that entire process. Concern about can we shrink? Can we really make a process that's beneficial for the candidate and for the district as well? Concerns from the building level that it would take so long to take someone through the process, that we have to reduce the amount of time that occurs so we can get those individuals actually in the buildings. And then discussion in relation to the employee evaluation systems being implemented consistently across the district. So from a comprehensive standpoint, in relation to the human resources functioning of the district, what you're doing in relation to recruitment, retention, the employment, the hiring process, the evaluation of employees. So really a restructuring, and again, I want to pause, this is something from what we understand that is underway in the school district. Some of the individuals providing feedback to us understand that it's underway and then strongly support it. So a significant issue. Define what characteristics you expect of your graduates. So you have a lot of initiatives, and you have a lot of programs. What are the characteristics that you expect of a graduate from the Springfield Public School District? And having that conversation collectively, this is what we expect in relation to characteristics of our graduates. Safety and security for all campuses, certainly where those campuses, safety and security is being addressed from a physical standpoint, they are appreciative. Other buildings saying, we want to continue the process. For example, discussion in relation to we have elementary playgrounds that would not be fenced appropriately, those types of situations. So there is a desire from what we heard in relation to continuing the effort in relation to safety and security. This is not saying, okay, you're not doing things in relation to safety and security, but continuing the process that is already going on. So what that would look like eventually in the goal is continuing to refine the process of your improvements in relation to safety and security. Some of those being physical, some of those might necessarily not be physical, but in relation to training, enforcement, implementation, and fidelity of the approach that you currently have in place. Academic performance, narrowing your focus and really simplifying what you're doing. So I want to pause on this one for just a couple of minutes. We heard a lot of conversation about what is the core mission of the Springfield School District. When we talk about focusing academically, what does that really mean? Really focusing on those core subject areas, accomplishing what needs to happen for each student in your district on those core fundamental, I'm going to call it those basic academic You do a lot in relation to special programs, special initiatives, a lot of things going on, that is not a criticism, but what we heard were people saying, we need to come back to focus on really what are those basics and what's really important. Okay? Student behavior and effective discipline practices. This is not uncommon for any school district right now. A lot of concern in relation to how do we deal with severe behavioral issues in our schools? So comments certainly from teachers and from parents as well in relation to how do we, how do we effectively and consistently across the district deal with the magnitude of significant behavioral issues we're dealing with? Okay? Continue to improve your facilities. This sounds like something I talked about just a couple of minutes ago, for those buildings that are going through or have recently gone through those improvements, they're really happy. Other buildings saying, it's our turn, we want to see those same improvements in our buildings as well. So that's a compliment to the district. People recognizing these improvements have been going on, when is it our turn, is really the question in that regard. So compliments to you, but a desire for more. Access to opportunity, excuse me, for all students. So a question arose on several occasions. Have we created barriers for some students for participation in some of our special programs and activities where they cannot participate because of factors in their own life? Commonly, we would look at cost for transportation. Do I have access to transportation depending on my home situation where I can access a program across the district? And if we don't have equal access to opportunity, then a discussion as a district, how do we remove those barriers in relation to equal opportunity, equal access to opportunity? Okay? Real-world learning, life skills ties in a little bit in relation to what I talked about in relation to academic performance. How do we as a district determine, this is what is really important to us? What is our core focus academically? What are those core expectations academically? A lot of the other things might be great, but we have to accomplish these things appropriately first. So people talking about those skills that students need in order to effectively graduate from high school and then be a great citizen in Springfield or wherever they might live. So what is real-world learning and those life skills? Not having it as something that's separate, but it has to be a part of what we do. Our expectation in Springfield is, we're going to focus on these core academic areas first. We have to do these things correct. The other things are great, but we have to accomplish our core mission first. I know I'm pounding on that issue a little bit, but really a strong theme in relation to, okay, folks, what's really important? Let's do this right first. And then the sound, long-term fiscal planning. You have some individuals that communicated with us in relation to they're concerned about the long-range fiscal impact on the Springfield School District of what's going on in society. So do we have a fiscal plan for the next several years in relation to what happens if state revenues are drastically reduced? I said what happens if those things occur. So really looking at a long-range fiscal plan to make sure that your employees and everything else that you're doing is taken care of appropriately. Okay, so I want you to think about this. So stakeholder engagement, major themes. You're going to have an opportunity through this process over the next couple of weeks to say, you know, I didn't see this theme and I'm really surprised, and you're going to have an opportunity for that input. You're also going to have an opportunity to say, you know, I don't understand what people are concerned about in relation to safety and security. So we're going to go through a process over the next several weeks where you have an opportunity for input. Those are the themes that we have at this point in time. Now what happens with those themes? So we have core themes, there are other things that we've heard that at least currently, unless you change that, haven't gone into themes. So I told you a couple of minutes ago, there are some things that are painful. So general concerns related to changes in start times about transportation, that probably is not a surprise to you. So you're trying to address that issue, most school districts are trying to address that issue. Currently, it is not a theme that would turn into a goal because you're trying to address it already through that process. So I would say this, with Dr. Lathan not in the room or in the room, it doesn't make any difference. The positive support and feedback for Dr. Lathan, the initiatives that she's put in place is really phenomenal. Highly, highly unusual. The question is, can we continue to do what we're already doing, trying to bring focus to the district? So visibility of the superintendent in buildings. I had one employee say to me, she's a real person, our superintendent's a real person. And I think, Dr. Lathan, you are a real person in that regard. So where you are currently is a district. So a lot of things in relation to, okay, what are challenges and things that we can address? A lot of really positive things that are going on as well. So as we go through this process, we're going to talk about focus, how do we break things down to focus? But phenomenal feedback in relation to the visibility, accessibility, then the reliability of the superintendent. The discussion in relation to the new executive director structure that you've approved, visibility of those individuals out in your elementary schools. Lot of positive feedback, we like this structure, we can see an individual directly that's responsible for our building, we have one person to go to that can respond to us and really give us the information we need. So positive feedback in that regard. Superintendent's entry plan, it aligns also with number two, but a lot of positive will right now in relation to the initiatives that have been put in place, the approach that Dr. Lathan has taken, being, are you still in the honeymoon period, Dr. Lathan, or is that long gone? I think we probably know the answer to that question, but really positive in that regard. And so number five is one of those painful ones, and so concerns related, okay, will the board continue to support Dr. Lathan and all these initiatives? So that is not uncommon, so don't take that as, oh my gosh, there's still blowing rocks at us. It is a question that we heard because there are a lot of initiatives that are underway. And with any team of eight, will the team of eight stay together going down the road in relation to addressing issues appropriately? So please understand, that is a, other notes of items that we heard. Okay. So where are we in relation to SMART goals? So I'm going to transition just for a minute in relation to the process. So you've seen these themes, so what you have right now are your first look at some SMART goals. This is not your draft plan. Okay? So this is taking some of those themes and what it would look like to turn them into goals. Okay? And again, you're going to have several opportunities to have the discussions about what's important to you, what's not important to you from those themes, themes that are not there. So please remind, please allow me to remind you, first blush at this, these are not for approval or even consideration for approval. Okay? But this is what it would look like. So your priority, which is going to turn into a standard in a final document when that's created, so Effective Teaching and Learning and Database Decision Making, two standards are listed there, so referring you back to those MSEP six standards, so your final goals have to have those standards listed. Dr. Lathan?
Might want to take out page six, board members? So he's referring to page six.
The objective in this regard is the continuous growth toward mastery in all academic areas. I won't read all of these to you in detail because you can read these on your own, and we're going to revisit them several times, but we'll go through this one in detail. So the goal, the superintendent or designees, will increase percentage of students meeting proficiency standards on local, state, and national examinations, and I'm going to read this one to you just for the sake of the audience. The Deputy Superintendent of Academics and Executive Director of Academics will continue implementation and utilization of local assessments at the following levels. Is it measurable? Same individuals? Implementation of the district assessment calendar and plan is attainable? Is it relevant? So with cited, okay, here's a statement on behalf of the district, but also the goal is contained in the following MSEP standards and indicators, and then the time bound. So the time bound is really crucial through this process. When you approve a final plan, you are also going, and these are placeholders, please, you are also going to approve a plan that has a time-bound component. So you as a board know, this is what is happening during this period of time. Some of the goals have a plan that will come to you, draft format, final format. So two really key points with time bound. One, you have a continuous school improvement plan, so it is not a one-time document. You're going to be updating a minimum annually as required by the state or other things that might occur. If you're not approving a final plan, okay, for five years, this is it, we're not doing anything different. That is not the case. Okay? Number two, the time-bound component gives you as a board, the accountability measurement for your administrative staff in those final goals you determine. Third component is, it becomes a communication tool for you. You are saying to your community, this is what we want to accomplish, this is when you can expect that to occur. This is when you're going to receive that information. So the time-bound component is really crucial. And again, those time-bound components, that'll all be a part of a conversation that you're going to have. Okay? So Effective Teaching and Learning, so real quickly, under the specific, the superintendent or designee will solicit feedback from a variety of stakeholders to examine the characteristics and attributes of SPS graduates. So I talked about in relation to, what is it you expect of all your graduates? You want them to have accomplished or experienced what? And again, those conversations are going to occur. Same format in relation to a SMART goal. And when you think of a SMART goal, your overarching goal, then you will have strategies and action steps. You have an overarching goal, but then you're going to have detailed strategies and action steps so you know exactly what's going to occur, who's going to do it, and when. Those strategies and action steps are created after you as a board say, we're going to agree to these goals. Okay? This one's in relation to Alignment of Standards Curriculum and Assessment. So how do you really make sure that you're focusing on student achievement, really looking at your curriculum, what's district adopted, all the details that go in, and again, I won't read all of this to you because we're not asking that you consider any of these in detail. Collaborative Climate and Culture, so behavior falls under collaborative climate and culture as the standard. So you're going to proactively teach and manage student behaviors at all schools. So your specificity is in relation to, you're going to have a process that's going to look at all your behavior systems. Are they appropriate? Are they being implemented correctly? Are there systems that are better in order to determine an evidence-based approach supporting student behavior? So how do you take, okay, this is a theme, we're concerned about student behavior. Then you determine, okay, as a district, we're going to look at what we're doing, is it effective, is it not effective? Are there better systems, processes, expectations that should be put in place? And we're going to set forth in relation to dealing with the issue that was identified to us by our stakeholders. But those strategies and action steps, again, are yet to be determined, so I don't want to confuse those things at this point in time. Okay. Engagement of your families, so again, under collaborative climate and culture. So you're going to design a process to continue to listen to your employees and your stakeholders. So what is really crucial through this process is So what is really crucial through this process is that you continue to have an opportunity for your stakeholders to provide input. Now, another meeting or two, we're going to talk about after you approve a final plan, your continuous plan, you have to, it's a requirement, within that first year as a board, have a comprehensive review. Here's where we are with these goals. Didn't like this one. This isn't working well. We want to add this one. You have to provide an opportunity to have additional feedback in relation to the progress on those goals. You can do that through thought exchange or whatever mechanism you want to utilize. And then you are required to give a report back to your community. This is what we said we're going to do. This is where we are currently, and these are the revisions that we're making. So that's a part of the continuous school improvement process, not a one-time opportunity for input. Now, not at the same level that you've just experienced, but an opportunity for input in that regard. And this is a part of communication and meaningful public engagement opportunities for all stakeholders. Leadership. We've talked about this a little bit in relation to aligning what you're doing to district administrative services and staff. What Dr. Lathan is currently addressing, and you're very aware, is very common, district's your size. You start getting larger around the middle in your district administrative positions. That is not a criticism of any individual, but it's very common. You are taking steps to address that issue. That is certainly recognized by your stakeholders, so congratulations in that regard. Obviously, it falls under one of those leadership standards. Is the long-range fiscal plan. Address employee compensation, facility needs. So as you know, you have a compensation plan for your employees. Can you continue that compensation plan? Been after your CBA, as you extend your CBA, whatever you do with it in that regard, collective bargaining agreement, as you know, then having your long-range facilities plan as well. So stakeholders saying, we like what's going on, but what is the plan for the future? Let's have a comprehensive plan going forward. Human resources functions of the district, we talked about this, analyzing what's going Again, this is underway. Really, a huge compliment for the district, individuals recognizing the initiatives that are underway, appreciating those initiatives, wanting to make sure those initiatives continue to occur. So congratulations in that regard. Then quality and safe learning environments for students and staff. So this issue, the safety and security, again, a very significant issue in school districts across the country this fall. This issue always draws a lot of attention from individuals in relation to, how can we better protect beyond what we're already doing, our employees and our students as well? Certainly Springfield's not any different in that regard. I wouldn't take it as a criticism. People just want that continued increased effort in that regard. And then equity and access. This is really in relation to, and you can read the goal, the chief equity and diversity officer, really looking at programming that addresses school belonging and really looking at student achievement. So as you know, you have some student achievement gaps. And it's really as a district continuing to look at, why do we have those gaps? What can we do as a district in relation to deficit we really see in that regard? Okay. Before we get to the next steps, so one of the things I want to go back to is really a resounding theme. It may be more difficult than it sounds initially. And again, I don't want to criticize, compliment for a lot of great programs and initiatives. You have a lot of special programs going on. But a really strong theme that we heard, let's focus on the basics and the core principles about what we're really about as a school district. Let's really focus on those core academic areas and really look at our student achievement in math and science and English, like language arts. So people will recognize, great that we're doing all these things, but are we missing our core focus academically as a school district? So we'll talk about, again, we won't solve all the world's problems tonight, but what does that really look like as a district? Okay. So first blush at, okay, themes and then what SMART goals would look like. These, again, are not proposed SMART goals, but how that turns into a transition from themes to SMART goals, then the overarching of SMART goals, strategies and action steps, specifically what's going to be accomplished in relation to what occurs here. Now, next steps. So Dr. Lathan's going to talk to us about, a little bit about next steps. So you've heard all of this, but how do I give valuable, meaningful feedback as well? So we can really go through that process. And so the additional Board of Education engagement. So Dr. Lathan?
Yes, thank you, Jim. And some board members, I did send you an email today with some additional information, so I just kind of want to walk through that. So once we finish with the next steps, I want board members to engage with Jim around questions from his presentations. Would like to, also, we'll talk about some ideas of how we took those things that went from themes to possible goals and put them into some categories. I would like to talk to you about that tonight. Then tomorrow, if not tonight, you will receive a survey or Google Doc. It will have all of these proposed goals. It will also have the mission and vision, the current one that is board-approved, for you to provide feedback. So you'll be able to go through and provide feedback and suggestions, ideas as we start thinking about strategies. You can also place them in that document. Ask that you work on that between November 16th and November 22nd so that we can pull the information based on all board member's feedback. It'll basically go into like a spreadsheet. We'll make some changes. And when I say changes, to the existing document that you're going to look at. And then when we meet on November 29th at the board meeting, we will dig deeper into, board members, here are the things that you shared, here are the priorities, here are the goals. And we will look at some possible strategies based on feedback that we have and based on feedback that you've provided. And then after, on November 29th, we'll look at all of that. You'll provide some more feedback, suggestions, ideas from that. We'll go back to work again. And then on December 6th, we'll come together. But between November 28th and December 6th, I encourage board members, if you want to do a deeper dive and come in one-on-one or in groups of two, three, you can come in and we can talk about it a little bit more. Then at the December meeting, we will have draft strategies and actions around those goals that we have created. And any changes from December 6th through December 9th, when basically the final is ready and uploaded for your review in the board docs. And then on December 13th, pending board approval for the plan. Let me stop and see, are there questions or clarifications needed? So.
Did you say, did you encourage us to meet with you?
Between December 28th?
29th and 6th, between those two?
Yes. I mean, not December, November 28th and December 6th, because then we will make some feedback and changes based on the feedback you provided.
On the 6th.
Right, and we can dig a little bit deeper. Like I said, you're going to receive an email that will have a link to Jim's presentation from tonight. It will also have a link to the possible, a different formatting. And then you will just provide all your feedback. You can just share anything you want to share as individual board members. Once again, we'll consolidate all of that. We will share that out publicly on November 29th. Questions or concerns on the next steps? Have we missed anything that we've discussed over the past several months as it relates to you being able to provide feedback? Or things you want us to consider?
Yeah, I would just say, appreciate the opportunity that we can meet with you two-on-one or one-on-one.
You can go up to three at a time, so.
During that period of time as feedback comes in. I think that would be helpful.
So a question from me to you, and I'll use this analogy. So when I came up here tonight, I was trying to make eye contact with you, and I did not look down at the podium, which says, when speaking during board meetings, so that's why I ask you the question. So as you review everything, okay, themes, starting sample, SMART goals, you have the opportunity to really collectively say to us, okay, I'm not sure that you didn't miss something in relation to X. So an opportunity for you to challenge us in relation to those themes and what that might look like, okay? So you also might say, you know, you've listed a theme, but as I thought about it, I'm not sure that it makes sense. Can you provide clarification? So you've had a lot of information really fast tonight, you have some other things on the agenda tonight. But that feedback, feel free to challenge us in the process in relation to what we heard, those themes.
Think about it from this standpoint, board members. Tonight is your night to ask Jim for additional questions. Basically, at this point, Jim gets ready to hand it off to you as a board, and then you're handing it off to me as it relates to the superintendent and coming up with the strategies and action steps. So more, your questions to Jim around the process, how these themes develop into possible goals from that standpoint. Then we can start to get busy once you've asked Jim those clarifying questions.
So after tonight, his work is done?
It's not necessarily done. He's still guiding us through the process, but we need to get started on the strategies and action. And so tonight is an opportunity for us to know what your thinking is. Are you, as you see these MSEP 6 standards and indicators and see how they have aligned them with possible goals, what questions do you have? Or you're saying, ah, I don't think we need to focus on that. I know we're already doing it, but we don't think it needs to be a part of, let's say, a public document. And then that's kind of the process that we're going through. Our concerns, like you said, if you see things that you thought or based on input that you've heard over the past years or this past year or two, that you think we need to focus on, this is where you bring that up. Does that make sense?
So one of the things that we are listening for, so for example, I'm back with you on the 29th. So based on your feedback, and you go through it and you read it, and over the weekend you go, you know, I really have this question and only Jim can answer this question. So you have an opportunity for all that feedback to occur as well. One of the challenges is in relation to, how do you take everything that you heard and determine, okay, here are the themes, and then from the themes, what really makes it into a SMART goal? Ultimately, that's going to be your decision. Let's talk about human resources department. So we heard about recruiting and retaining. Have you read that information? We've heard about the hiring process, heard about inconsistency in evaluation. So we're listening for those themes going, okay, this is about the human resources department. Then we engage with the district and understand that, okay, restructuring is going on. People recognize that it's going on, but they want to see these things accomplished. Then it turns into a goal. Now, excuse me. So the state says, for what it's worth, the state says a limited number of focused goals. Limited is only defined by you. So when you look at, okay, 10 goals just from this tonight as an example, how many goals do you really want to address as a school board? There isn't a right or wrong number. Some of your initiatives, some of your potential goals work underway already. Back to, the time-bound component is really crucial. So sequencing the things you want to address is an important part of strategic planning process. Fortunately for Springfield, you have a number of wonderful individuals to my left that can take particular projects and move forward. But again, what goes from a theme to a goal? How many goals are too many, too few? We'll continue to have that conversation. But what is the nexus between a theme and a goal? That's really something that you're going to have an opportunity to provide feedback in relation to, really not important to me, you may have heard as a theme, not important to me, or I'm really surprised we didn't hear this theme, we want to have discussion about it really being a goal.
Jim, I have a question. Oh, sorry. I have a question. So help me understand a little bit, a little bit more about the process. And looking at some of the additional data and information that was provided to us today, I'm wondering how the information from the different stakeholders, teachers, board members, parents, community members, how it weighs into the theme? Is there a weight that's associated with different types of feedback?
The answer is no. For example, we didn't say, okay, Hillcrest High School, we heard this as a really resounding theme from Hillcrest. We did not hear it from Parkview. All the high schools are putting together collectively in that regard. So do we give a different weighting to appearance over a staff member vice versa? The answer is no.
Is there any way in your process that limits people from responding in multiple categories in those thought exchanges?
That's a question for the district, I think. In relation to thought exchange, is there any, are there any barriers that limit individuals from response?
From responding in multiple categories? So for example, in looking at some of the responses from teachers versus community members versus parents, some of the language suggested that some teachers were responding in different categories or parents were responding in teacher categories. And so while we're looking at teacher responses, were they actually teacher responses or were they parent responses or were they community member responses? I'm just curious because some of the language didn't seem to match that of a teacher with regards to, you know, pointing to themselves versus pointing outward.
So when individuals identify, they're asked to self-identify themselves. And so one obviously, we have employees, we have parents. Some are employees and parents. So it does ask that demographic question.
But it's self-identifiable?
It is, yes. Self-identifiable. When you go back in to continue to engage in a thought exchange, it will recognize you from your device. So it will continue, and you're encouraged to continue to come back to the thought exchange. You can either leave another thought, another series of thoughts, or you can rate the thoughts of others. So what you can see, when you look at top thoughts by category, it could be, those weren't thoughts that originated with that individual, but they resonated with them. So they engaged highly, they rated it high. And so that's why you would see that that was a common theme within that group. But the thought may not have originated with them, if that makes sense. So that's really, we're talking about a virtual town hall where you have thoughts coming from all different areas, but you see the common themes that are relevant to the wider audience begin to rise to the top. And so you could see language that would be teacher-centric, but it would still resonate heavily with a parent or a community member. And they may not have been the person who shared that thought, but if it resonated with them, they will rate it high.
Thank you. That helps.
Wait, I don't, can we tell if it's teacher or parent? I didn't know we could tell, like the responses.
So there was a follow-up question, and Dr. Lathan addressed that with the board just in terms of top thoughts by each of the groups. So, yes.
Oh, I think that later you know.
Yes.
Never mind.
Steven?
Yeah, I think somewhat the reader about the weighing aspect, I might be able to see the data, I want to see the numbers, then the themes. I think that would be valuable to me, be able to help and steer me in the direction that many of our stakeholders, teachers, are foreseeing that they want us to go as a board. So can I get that information?
So a question for you, Steven. Go ahead.
I think the summary that we shared, you can actually drill there, so we go in to the top thoughts, also go into the themes, the auto, the online type software. You can click on that tile or that theme, and it will populate all of the thoughts that are related to that specific theme. It also identifies the number of people who would rate that particular thought. So there is information.
You have to drill.
And where does I, where am I supposed to receive this?
Part of the summary that has gone out.
Okay.
That would have gone out on October 28th, I believe.
That was October. The original email you received on October 28th after October 28th before me.
I'll go back to that.
We're all going to be thought exchange experts.
Right.
I have a couple of questions. So, hey, I'm a very concrete person. Right now, we have a strategic plan. Will we revise based on the MSEP 6? Is that going to be our SMART goals? Will that be, will our SMART goals be our strategic plan? Am I asking that question in a way that makes sense?
I think so. So the SMART goals will just be a component of.
Okay, with those other items that MSEP 6 requires us to have.
You're going to see SMART goals, strategies, action steps. And I think we may even get to it tonight. We'll show a little other example of what that might look like. To answer your question, no.
Okay. But that, thank you, that provides me some more context. You took the themes and from those themes, you drafted SMART goals. But you said a couple of times tonight, these are not necessarily the goals. times tonight, these are not necessarily the goals that we have to adopt, now it's in our hands to kind of revise those goals. Is that correct?
That is correct, if I may add to it just a little bit. So these are examples of SMART goals that would be generated from the themes. What's really important now is for your feedback collectively, and so as Dr. Lathan talked about, you're going to have this process to provide feedback in relation to the themes. And then based upon those themes that you agree on, those are the things that really turn into SMART goals. Oh, you may or may not see some of the SMART goals here.
And I understand and appreciate that we do have a deadline, based on what's been provided to us. Do we have any plan to go back to our stakeholders and say, "This is what we heard from you, these are the themes that we think we heard, these are the goals that we're now creating based on these themes, are these goals correct based on the themes that we think we heard?"
I mean, we could do something through a thought exchange after you kind of narrow it down, from thinking about around that week of October, oh, or my day, week of November 28th, we could do something like that, if we've gotten it down, and you're kind of facing the last step of the process, and then we could have the vote to give a stakeholders to give feedback.
It would be nice to circle back around, so that somewhere in the game of telephone, we didn't accidentally lose what we were hearing, or what you were hearing from them.
But this is a living document, in that we're not married to this for long-term, and so we could always go back and revise and update our, add to our plan as needed, correct?
Absolutely correct. I like to call it a living, breathing document. And if you create it as your plan, and then you don't revisit it for a period of time, that is not what you're supposed to be doing in relation to continuous school improvement.
That's dead, it's not living.
Absolutely.
Can you go back to that slide nine, the themes, please? Go back to slide nine, please.
No, I was.
These are in order?
No.
Okay. I think safety and security ought to be number one. It always should be. Okay?
So you're going to have an opportunity to start prioritizing at some point in time? These are not prioritized.
Okay. Thank you. Looking at the next slide, it says, number three, positive feedback on new executive directors' structure as it relates to increased visibility, support, and consistency. But then on number one and number two, there was a stakeholder theme about consistency. How does those two relate? How do those two relate?
So recognition that this is trying to be addressed by the new executive director system.
Okay.
But there's still work to be accomplished in relation to what has occurred. So concern expressed, okay, we've had inconsistency, we haven't had visibility, we've had one person in charge of all these buildings, that's been a concern, we recognize that changes are being made, we want to make sure that direction continues as a school district.
Okay, I heard it's not consistent direction from district leadership team. That was the old leadership team? But that's our, is that the old leadership team you were talking about before?
So a question for you to, so we're based on old leadership team, we're based on transition that's occurring, and then recognition now that Dr. Lathan is addressing the issue.
Okay.
Did you find any contradictions?
Contradictions, always.
And how did you guys reconcile those?
So that was a conversation in relation to, what did you hear, what building level, elementary, high school, what level was it? And then what did the others hear in their buildings as well? So it was really, it was a group conversation in relation to, in an isolated location, we may have heard this, but we did not hear it collectively.
So I guess my question also goes into, did you have dichotomized themes, where, you know, there were two sides of the same coin, where there were two groups who felt diametrically opposed to one another with regards to an idea?
See, I think we see a lot of those, or some of those comments in thought exchange, if you read through all of those comments, some people have a very strong position on this side, some people have a very strong position on that side as well.
So again, then, when that happens, how does that get reconciled into the themes that are selected?
So it's consistency in relation to response. So we heard hypothetical numbers, we heard three people that really want to see this accomplished, but no, the response is, if we can go back through thought exchange, we can quantify all of that and say, no, but we had, you know, 10 people that really saw the view from the opposite direction.
So I guess, I'm thinking back to when we had the, I think it was the same system, the thought exchange, when we did with masking, or with the transportation, and we saw where there were these two camps kind of things, there was some overlap, but there were two camps, and it's like, we have 50% who felt this way, and 50% who felt that way, and kind of, that's a kind of a stalemate, we can't, we just have to make a decision because we're not going to make anybody happy. I guess that's kind of what I'm asking with regards to these thought exchanges, were there things that came up where there were, and they still made it to our list of priorities?
Yes, there is a tendency to look at polar sides of an issue, and to see how, what are the numbers of the different constituents driving that conversation? So if you have side A and you have side B, you have 400 people that favor side A, maybe you have 250 side B, and it's polar opposites, but then there may be a whole other issue that those two sides agree with. And so yes, the software does do that. It will say, it will indicate which side was predominant on each side, but then also where they could agree on other issues. So I think that was helpful in informing some of the things brought forward.
Anyone that hasn't had an opportunity to ask their questions, is that thing?
So are you suggesting that we obviously have a mission and vision, which we are going to be discussing soon, and that directly beneath that mission and vision is where these SMART goals would be? And then beneath that would be the strategies, is that what you call them?
The strategy for each goal.
So you're saying, so there's nothing, the mission and vision, then SMART goals, that's where the board operates, and then we hand it off to the district to figure out how to accomplish those SMART goals?
So your mission and your vision, if you have other belief statements or anything else you want to put in between, then you have your comprehensive school improvement plan, which will include SMART goals, strategies, and action steps, all of the detail in that regard. Any other information you want to put in there that's at the determination of the board?
I don't have any more questions, but I have all thoughts.
I have, oh, can I just, I'll ask a couple of questions, and then we can get into thoughts. Okay, real quick.
You said we're getting, you're asking a question, we're getting into what?
Oh, thoughts.
Okay, thoughts, okay.
She said you have some thoughts.
She has some thought exchanges, she wants to provide, state of thoughts.
Real quick.
Okay, gotcha.
I have a few sticky notes, but they should be quick. So it's mission, vision, SMART goals, strategies, and action plans. They're looking at our current CSET plan. The focus areas are the SMART goals, the strategies underneath them, the 1, 2, 3s. But we don't currently have action steps, do we? Or have I missed that?
The whole list that, yeah.
Is it, is it, it is on our CSET, it is on that living, that document that she paid, okay?
Should be there. Or it's, I don't know, should be there.
Okay.
I mean, it's there, but I'm just saying if it's, if it's public, you know, in that prepaid printed sheet, okay.
So if you go to slide 15, okay, I'm just using this as an example. So you presented 10 goals, and I'm hearing we need to like, kind of, bring that maybe down to 3, 4, 5, 6, something along those numbers. So we could have this, you said that every year, you would go back, reevaluate CSET with the stakeholders and report back. So even if this wasn't in our CSET plan, we would still do it, right? It doesn't have, it doesn't have to be a goal. Did I hear that correctly?
You were going to answer first, and then I'll follow. So think about it in this regard, as a governing body, creating a clear focus, this is what we want addressed. We want these things accomplished. You hold your superintendent accountable for accomplishing what you said you want accomplished. In this case, Dr. Lathan holds a lot of other people accountable in that regard as well. So this is the quandary. You want a clear focus of the district, but if there are other things that you want accomplished, are they a part of that master plan, or are they outside of that master plan? My encouragement to you, as much as possible, I am not saying it's 100% possible, but as much as possible, the direction you determine for the district, try to include everything within that direction of the district.
Try to include, so as strategies or action plans, maybe not at the top, kind of put it, build it in. Okay, then, two more questions. When you talk about time bound, and I thought of this when you were doing 11, slide 11, so does time bound mean how often you assess it, or is it, we're going to assess, let's say this is the standards on local, state, and national examinations, we're going to assess this yearly, but is time bound also have the factor of, within the next 2, 3, 4 years, we would like to see an improvement? Is that also part of it? Both of those?
It's both of those, but in relation to this question, you have a local assessment plan. So the board has approved a local assessment plan, which is your testing protocol. So that is in place, which requires you to list what test you are giving, not, we're going to give a end-of-the-year final history test, but what test you are giving, when you're going to give those tests, and again, that document is board-approved. In this regard, you're looking at the mastery in all academic areas. So to answer your question, without being too detailed, it could be both.
It can be both.
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think I've got one more. That one, that question, and then, okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, trying to put what you said and what Sharida brought up earlier, it sounds like of the engagement major themes, there was two of them that were similar, number 6 and number 10, that's on slide 9. And then you came back to that and said that the resounding theme was a focus on basics and the core principles in the academic areas that is missing in our district. So is that one way, is that, and then what Mr. Hall was saying was that, on issues that are polarizing, that people are divided on, you've got people on this side and this side, that we're focusing on what's in the middle, because Sharida asked, well, how is that being resolved, or how is that being addressed? I'm hearing that that is being addressed, this quote-unquote stalemate situation that you used, that we're, what we're coming together on and what's in the middle, is the focus on the basics and the core principles. Is that how that's being addressed?
I'm not sure I'm tracking your question 100%.
I didn't track that. Did you track what I said?
Yeah, for example, and that's what we talked about. Let me get to the page, I'm sorry. 6 and number 10, so on page 9, you, like, number 6 and number 10, when we talk about the next steps, we consolidated that into one area, because the focus is, as you think about the profiles of a graduate, or also think about 4, 6, and 10.
They're all the teaching and learning ones.
All of teaching and learning, being similar, yes. And then us focusing and working on those, and working on strategies to address that collectively. That's not answering your question.
That's not what I asked. No, but, okay, so for example, social issues, right, people are on polar opposites, and so is the way that we address the stalemate on how we're going to address it, is to just focus on what everybody agrees on, which is the core basics and principles.
Not necessarily, no. So, this is my two cents, you receive the feedback, but now the board has to say, okay, thank you so much for the feedback, we've looked at it, but what do we value as a board, and what do we see as the core priorities, the core values of this team? What do we see? And if it is to, yes, where everyone meets in the middle, like you said, that's fine, but if it's not, but we see based on our data, our student achievement data says there are gaps here, so we need to address that, then we still would focus on what the data is telling us. So yes, you kind of go out where they met in the middle, but sometimes you have to take a step out and be bold to say, okay, you're saying, this side is saying this, this side is saying that, but our data is telling us, we need to go in this particular direction. So that's still up to the board to decide that direction. There's no right or wrong, and, you know, there's no right or wrong in doing it, it's just what the board decides as a priority or a thought around this.
So will there be, are there issues where people are on both sides of an issue, and there may not be a middle? You, as an elected board member, have been elected to make those decisions.
And you've already said that none of these 11 topics are in any particular order, and those SMART goals are also not in any particular order.
We're going to go through a process to talk about prioritization, but that's going to occur.
And did I say it right when I said 3, 4, 5, 6? That would, you said limited. You said that, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, limited number of focused goals, however you define limited, I think we're going to get to it tonight, even though over time, we're going to get to show you an example of what that might look like in that regard. But I want to summarize a couple of key things for you. One is you have time to really digest themes. You have an opportunity to say, well, we didn't hear this, but I really thought we would hear this, so let's go back and look at this, or let's look at some more thought exchange information. So you have an opportunity to go through that. There may be things that are not listed here, that you, as a board, say, this is really important to us. Perfectly fine, that's why we're going through this process, where you have an opportunity to provide that feedback in that regard. But at the end of the process, it's your plan, you approve it or you don't approve it. Well, you approve it because you have provided the input in relation to what goals you really want to see occur. Again, are there, is there a definition for limited? The answer is no. But try to take the direction you want as a district. Okay, as a board, this is what we want accomplished. Those things are in your plan going forward. The goals in your plan should be the goals for the purpose of evaluating your superintendent. Okay? So when you go through the evaluation cycle required by your policy to adopt goals for your superintendent evaluation cycle, the goals from your CSET, of what you have said you want accomplished, become Dr. Lathan's goals, and obviously, if there are other goals you want to add to that, we would like to see you be more active in participation in quantiscope. But your focus of what Dr. Lathan or team accomplish, the goals you set forth in your CSET.
You just mentioned that there's more that you wanted to show us, and since we apparently only have 45 minutes left, we are time-bound. Ken, is there more that needs to be presented? Because I think the value, personally, I believe a lot of, we're hearing a lot of, we need to decide, and we do, so we need to have discussion and make some decisions, and we don't have much time left. So is there more that we need to be presented?
I just asked one question, though. I'm sorry, I agree with you totally. Go to number 11, please. This is what I want to say, ask, is that, thank you, under measurable, most of these we need SMART goals are, say, are they done or are they not? And there's nothing measurable there besides that. Is it your job then to go in and, when you build these SMART goals, to make it more specific, where it is more measurable?
Yes, that's the next, that's part of the process, once we get down, we narrow the goals down, we look at the strategies and action steps, that's where we make it more specific of the growth we want to see, the participation rate in a particular program, you attach some percentages to that.
Okay. Number 12, just one last question, has talked about stakeholders here throughout this whole thing. Who's a stakeholder? I think that needs to be defined.
Stakeholders can be a parent, can be a staff member, community members, it depends on the particular strategy that we're working on, and so we would define that. You just use stakeholders as a catch-all, and then you can drill it down, like we used stakeholders this time around, but it included staff, teachers, student, high school students for us, community members.
The only last thing, the relevant section of that doesn't make any sense, but that's just my personal.
Stakeholders. Well, the relevant session, section tells you where in M66, the indicators, standards and indicators, where, so you see that CC3, CC4, TO1, those are the standards and indicators that tells you that that's what this tie, this particular goal ties to.
Okay.
Did I answer?
No.
Do you have more information?
Don't worry about it.
There's some information.
Dr. Lathan has some more information with a couple of her staff members, that I'm going to be here for this, but.
One question I would ask you, so really, with your work with other districts in doing this, I'm working out the 11 SMART goals for the major themes. So is it usual, or is it something potentially a week Or is it something potentially a week to look at? Because as I'm looking through these, I see some reoccurring themes, recurring themes within the themes, that these could be grouped, become a goal.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Because I already see three that I think could make one goal, and another three that could be a goal, and two that we could end up with. As Marion mentioned, the three to five goals that I think we could add a bit about it in MSIP last week. It could very easily get to, or, in the number of goals that we're interested in, because these could be put into one goal. Is that a thing that you see happening?
I'm going to say this one more time, and I'm going to step aside so I don't get trouble. You're going to see a document in just a couple of minutes, I think it'll help answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, our current plan has focus areas, goals, and strategies. I wanted to make sure I cleared that up, based on the.
Focus areas?
Focus areas, so you have the five focus areas, we have the goals, and then we have the strategies.
So, but no action plans?
No, but they're still addressing, though, it's all about formatting, because I don't want to take away anything from what, from the previous work. It's all, it's all about formatting, and how you.
How we format.
How we format it. Now, keep in mind, like I said, this is just for discussion only, it's another way to look at the information that EGL has provided around those 10 goal information. So if you think back to the document, and we're going to just use, it's pull a page, it doesn't make, a pull page, I just want to kind of do a crosswalk to show you what we did. Oh, I do have a copy, I apologize. Bad teacher, right now.
Are you giving that to us so we can read it?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good.
Yes. So what we did is, because I know a number of you say, well, we have a lot of goals, it's 10 goals. Oh, it's short. I got it by the way. Here we go, it's right here, it's right. So going back to Marion, I thought I was answering your question when you said, like, on the themes, like, one, like, six and 10, or six and nine could be together. So we took those and placed them, and what we have, four overarching governing priorities. If you look at the document that EGL provided, they also had governing priorities. We placed them into four categories. Success-ready students. Go back up, Nicole, go back up. Success-ready students. And then we added a commitment of what we are committed to do as a district, to ensure that our students are successful and ready once they graduate. So we're committed to prepare, preparing all students to be college and or career ready. Under there, you see the governing objective, the same information that was in Jim's document, and then you see SMART goal 1.1. Now, you still, as a board, can say, you know what, we don't want to focus on SMART goal 1.1 or 1.3, because you're already, we're already covering that as a district. You still get to go provide feedback line by line on all of this information. But as you think about what would be the four goals, now, people call them the governing priorities, you could just say priority one. So right now, we're saying governing priority one, success-ready students. Taking those five of the 10 and placing them under priority one. And then go down to priority two, we said organization efficiency. This is one that deals with the HRPs, it deals with the fiscal plan, as it relates to employee compensation and facility needs, and the overall review around district procedures and practices. So we've taken those three and placed those under governing priority two. Once again, we are, we know we're working on the high-level features around the HR reorganization, but as Jim said, people said, we want to make sure that that continues. But as a board, you might say, we think we've gotten off a good start, we've had an audit, we've had presentations, we've done reorganizations, we don't necessarily want to focus on that moving forward, far as publicly focusing and updating. We want to still receive updates as a board, when we provide updates around where we are as a district, but we don't necessarily want it to sit in our plan. Then governing priority three, collaborative culture, and that's committed to providing proactive communication and engagement for all stakeholders. This deals with communication, getting people involved. Once again, going back to the original goal, that would be SMART goal 3.1, engaging students, staff, families, and larger communities. As Scott said, who are the stakeholders? So that lists out who our stakeholders are. And then the fourth governing priority is quality learning environment. Think about student behavior, the safety of our facilities, the themes we heard, as you think about the themes, this would be governing priority four, quality learning environments. We're committed to safe environments that optimize learning. And Scott, going back to your comment about it should be first, we're saying, if one day, on any given day, we're focusing on all of these priorities. It doesn't mean that we're not focused on safety, so it doesn't matter where it falls, this is our commitment and our binding contract as a team, of what we are going to provide for students, staff, and the community. Once again, that's just one way to look at it. When you receive the survey tonight or tomorrow, you will have a space to add input on all of these items, including the mission and vision. Once again, it's, oh, thank you, Nicole, it's just feedback, where you'll put all that information in, we take it and consolidate it. Now, tonight, though, we still have time, if you say, we really need to focus on this, or I still see something that's missing, I think it's a lot tonight to take in, I think you probably want to take a step back, go look. But if there are any parting comments, or suggestions, or thoughts that you have, that you would like to talk about now, I think we should do that. So I'm going to pause for a minute, see if that makes sense. Stop laughing. Does that make sense?
Can I say quickly, just thank you for doing this?
Oh, okay.
Because this organizes what we represented in a very powerful way. And I have some more thoughts that I'm happy to share, but I just wanted to say that before.
Go ahead. You want feedback before November 22nd on this?
Perfect.
Right. Feedback on take it out, leave it, think about the strategy, it really is an opportunity, if it's not even here. If you have a goal that you want us to work on and consider, now, remember, the whole board votes on it, but if Steve has one that is truly important to him, this is the document where you tell us everything you're thinking about. Does that make sense?
Are you going to send us a template that will allow us to?
So we organized before.
You're going to get that shortly. If you don't get it tonight, you'll have first, it's ready to go, unless you have some feedback or chat, yeah, you have some homework, because we'd like it by next Tuesday, so we can pull the information and be working on some things before the 29th, and we can also share it with EGL.
So it is organized by the document that Dr. Lathan just provided you, right? So if you're looking at the presentation, the form won't be organized in that way, it'll be organized following the condensed document. So under governing priority one, you'll be able to give feedback to each of the SMART goals within that. And as you advance the form, it'll take you to the different sections. Right? So then you'll go to organizational efficiency. But to Danielle's point, we don't have an open-ended comment at the end, where you might be able to just add anything else. So we'll add that tonight, just so if there's anything that wasn't captured within one of the goals that you'd like noted, we'll add that too.
And also, I just realized, under each governing priority, we need to add a space for comments there, in case you say, I don't know if we want to say student ready, success student ready.
We have the additional feedback for consideration for each one. That's there, but it's the total, I think you need to have just one at the end.
Okay, thoughts, comments, questions, suggestions?
Yeah, I can jump in. So again, the reason I say thank you for this is, as I was building that presentation, my mind kind of went in the same direction. Me, it's really important what we decide our mission and vision is going to be, because everything points to that. And I feel, feels a little bit like we're doing it backwards to me without that. I know we have one that we currently have one, but I guess I would make a request that as we consider that mission statement, we consider the reason for each of these, I'll say, you have governing priorities on there, but each of these, we have a commitment, I guess? And I think the point of each of these commitments, everything underneath it, every commitment, every governing, governing objective, every SMART goal, is, I think Jim alluded to this, is kind of focusing on the basics of what we're here to do, which is, a lot of ways to phrase it, so I might say it wrong, but academic performance, academic achievement, something, we're here to educate kids. And I think it's important when we talk about the mission statement and the vision, that we realize that all of this needs to point to that. And we can put a lot of things in that mission or vision, but I don't necessarily think that's the place for it, because we have the rest of this stuff that, in this document that points up to it. I mean, for example, you've got, we are committed to safe environments that optimize learning. Well, why? Well, to optimize learning, right? We are committed to providing proactive communication and engagement for all stakeholders. Why are we doing that? So that we can provide the best education for, for each student, right? So each of these, and I think that's where we really should reiterate, and state, I personally, we had this vote a few months ago, like the old mission statement of whatever it was, and.
I thought you were going to keep it, but you wouldn't.
And then, and then our new mission, newer mission statement, when you start talking about relevant, engaging, and personal, it's not that we don't need to do those things, it's just, that's not where it should live, we need to keep our focus, as Jim keeps saying, major and the majors, right? And our focus is on education. And throughout the rest of this, is where we can put the rest of that, so that we never forget that why are we doing each of these things? It's to point towards our main goal, which is educating each and every student to the best of our abilities. So.
No, I agree with you, relevancy is, if you think about, look at 1.2, if you look at 1.5, that gets into making sure, once we know what the graduate, what a SPS graduate profile is, using those terms, you can change that, or the characteristics. And then when you look at SMART goal 1.5, ensuring that students have access to various programs and opportunities, that's what makes it personalized, but we have to make sure we can get them to all those various opportunities that come back with the around expectation. Your earlier comment about stakeholder feedback, this is another way that we could even take this now, and let stakeholders say, this is where we are, but once again, it's not a final document, but that's another way to get additional feedback if that's a request.
So, so I think what's probably important for us as the board is to discuss what, what some potential thoughts or ideas of what a mission statement should look like, a mission statement and a vision, and then also these sort of governing priorities or commitments would be sort of the next logical thing is, how can we have these buckets that all these other SMART goals fall into? And you've done a very good job of doing this. I'll, again, I jumped the gun on this a little bit, because we didn't have this, we had the other information, but I did, took my own crack at this and ended up being very similar. I've got copies, I'll share with everyone, and it's just an example, and you'll see, it's actually really quite similar to this, but I think for the sake of discussion, it's important for us to talk about the mission, and then let's talk about, basically, the commitments, is the way we've put them in here, governing priorities or whatever, before we start really going in the details of all the goals. That's just my thoughts, I mean.
So are we going to get that in the morning? Or are we going to get up, and we can give you feedback on our ideas of the mission, vision?
Right, you're going to get it, I mean, you have time if you want to, we can pull it up on the screen, but yes, it is the very beginning of the survey you're going to receive. That's the first thing, is you're going to see the current mission, and then suggestions on changing it.
And that comes to us. So you want to have a little preliminary conversation about that, and then we're going to be able to give you that feedback.
So was the plan that you would get feedback on the mission and then come back to us after the 22nd and say, this is what we heard from you, and this is?
Yeah, or you could not. We're, like I said, these are just thoughts.
We have four minutes.
I'd like to suggest that we at least discuss some thoughts around the mission statement while we're all here together.
Should we just take a couple of minutes to give feedback on this document, real quick?
Either way, I'm open to, look, she's ready.
I could do it in 30 seconds. Why don't we just each take a minute?
And then we have Kelly's document also.
Okay. Wow, this is fresh in our.
I'd like to thank Dr. Mopra, though, for formatting this beautiful document today.
Oh, my. No, he didn't do that. He needs to be an action step found, Dr. Superintendent, not telling the truth.
Nicole.
We all know that.
Dr. Holden, Dr. Lemon actually formatted this.
Since we have this, if you have questions.
Same color, she's not going to live that down.
Kelly said we even, Nicole, I'm going to have to give credit to Nicole and Nicole.
Oh, my gosh.
You all selected a similar color scheme to Kelly. See?
So Marion's ready to go with questions. Let's go ahead, let her ask questions.
I just feedback.
Okay. And then we'll, what have, we have a little time, so just keep it sweet and short and simple.
Six hours.
Keep what is it? Keep it short and swift.
I'm, I would like to see, you don't have to do it, I'm, just my ideas, as one board member, I would like to see us make an attempt at fixing the transportation and start times, because it has an educational impact for stakeholders, and it's.
Is it on here?
Um, I didn't see it on here. And I know that Jim said that.
It's in his copy.
Okay. That's such, that's one thing, and it probably fits in here somewhere.
Okay. No, that's.
Okay, let me just, because I know.
You can put that in there.
Okay, I'm just, hold on, I got to get these thoughts out. So the high behavioral expectation for students, I see that's under success-ready students, priority one, so that doesn't fall under priority four, it's priority one. So when you talk about quality learning environments, that's from a simple safety, because I think of behavior as a quality learning environment as well. Next, I'm happy to see SMART goal 1.5 for access and opportunity for students to experience barriers, and that's with an eye towards maximizing educational impact. For organizational efficiency, in my mind, I'm gearing towards organizational efficiency and excellence.
Oh, excuse me? Okay.
Then, I'll go back up to 1.3, this one I would appreciate if you wrote it down, because it's really important to me. Implementation of district adopted curriculum aligned to Missouri learning standards. I would like clarification on that wording. I personally would like to see evaluation and adoption and then implementation. Because implementation of district adopted means, we're going to implement what we have now. I would like to see us adopt time-tested curriculum that we may or may not have. To me, that's important.
What's time-tested curriculum?
Something that we know has worked, not, like, the research shows that if we do this, like, we did research over the last year, and it shows that kids can learn better this way, versus, we did this in the 80s and 90s and early 2000s. For the last 30 years, we've done this, and it always has worked, I don't know, just, and.
Good example.
I'm sorry, what?
That's a good example.
Okay. I don't know where this would go, and, you know, everybody knows this is my baby, maybe it's an action plan. You know what I'm going to say, right? The technology.
Yes.
Which one are you on?
Technology. Well, it's not in here, and I don't know if it comes under action plan. I just, I'm just putting my plug in.
I think it would.
For, you know, responsible, balanced, it's a tool.
Okay.
And, you know, like a pencil, it's a tool. And I just don't know where it goes, or if it even needs to be in here. Maybe it's an action plan, and it's not even a strategy. I just want to put my two cents in there. I'm done.
Okay, good.
And you're going to, are you going to add these to your form that you're going to submit? But we have, we also, we are also capturing it, though, okay?
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else have some quick things at this point in time, you feel like you want to share about?
May I reiterate something she said? Something that stood out to me as I was reading through the EGL paperwork, and that she just said, I hear this a lot, she said, research-based or data-based, and I hear that a lot, and it didn't, for some reason, it just clicked with me. I completely agree. It's just my one board member's impression that I really do like the idea of, what do you say, time?
Time-tested.
Time-tested. Because I think even historically, whether it was 50 years ago or 10 years ago, sometimes we get, we do things, whether it's in education, or in the design of a building, or anything else, that we think, hey, research tells us that this will work. And then we find out the hard way 10 years later, or 20 years later, oh, nope, that didn't work, so we change it. I think that's really important, what she said, in our language there, that, that we focus as a district to do things that are time-tested. Not just in curriculum or delivery, but also in design of buildings, et cetera. I think that's a theme that I would like to see. I think that's a theme that I would like to see. I'm just one board member.
Can I just say that I hear what you're saying and I can appreciate that, and I do want to balance out both evidence-based practice and time-tested because they are not the same thing, they're a little bit different. And just because something worked in the past doesn't mean it's going to work in the present. One, we have different needs educationally for our students. Even if we look at what the requirements for a person to be literate was 20 years ago, that is a very different definition of what it means to be literate today. So we can't use the same methods that we used 20 years ago when literacy required different kinds of things. It worked then because we had different needs. Also, we had different populations and different things that are happening. We had, you know, more homogeneous kinds of groups of kids learning in different kinds of environments. And so, given the population, the needs of our students, the curriculum, everything, time-tested is perhaps, in my opinion, not the best metric versus evidence-based.
Well, I think it's subject, like, there's an art, right? There's a balance. And what I'm saying is as much as possible, let's go with what we know worked historically. And just because, yeah, obviously our classrooms aren't going to look like they were in the 80s or the 70s or whatever, and some things do change, but I guess what I'm pushing for is making sure that, making sure that just because we're the largest district in the state or because we have a large budget or whatever it is, or we're seen as a leader in the state, that we're not, that we're not suddenly taking upon ourselves to do R and D, like, research and development, to be on the frontier of what's going to work, right?
Right, that's not what I'm saying at all.
I don't think it is.
Evidence-based is something that has been tried and tested and has, that has evidence that demonstrates its ability to work. And I think some things that are time-tested may be evidence-based, but not all of the time-tested things are evidence-based. And so for me, it's more important that it's evidence-based than time-tested because of the nature of change over time.
Okay.
Okay, great. So Steve, did I see you?
No.
Oh, no, I thought we weren't talking, he wants to...
You can take it and review it on your own, and just my thoughts for your review, I'm happy to leave copies if anyone else, in case anyone else requests it, since we don't have it to show or whatever.
Did you want to kind of start a discussion about mission, vision, is that what you...
No, I have additional things that I would like to add.
Okay.
And just because that these were...
On this, Shreeda, on this document, I took my eye out.
So Jim mentioned that we may want to add things that we were surprised didn't come up. And so, that's part of my questioning about who were the people giving the different kinds of responses, et cetera, for those thought exchanges and other kinds of input that came up with the themes. One of the things that did not show up was the professional development of our teachers, to make sure that we are having highly trained, highly qualified teachers who are working in the classroom. And so, making sure that we include teacher training and teacher professional development as a part of our plan. I know that we have a professional development plan, but I also wanted to make sure that it's part of our goal, the priority that we're saying, we're going to make sure that our teachers are highly qualified and well-trained.
Let me just ask a quick question.
In our previous...
Some of the thought exchange, where some of those themes pop up in the thought exchange? And teacher training, and teacher quality?
I would have to look back just to refresh mine, and Marie, I know there were, there were comments that didn't necessarily surface at the top as a major theme, but there were certainly praise for teachers being highly qualified and trained, and that was definitely a comment.
Did you read those?
I did read those. I'm saying that they didn't show up on any of our priorities, our whole things that we came up here. And so, as we are planning out our priorities, I want to make sure that that's included. It was a part of our previous plans to make sure that teachers are part of our plans that we were talking about, the needs of the teachers in the classroom, that they receive the kind of support that they needed in order to be successful, and I want to make sure that that happens as a part of this.
Think about a strategy under Smart Goal, this idea, a Smart Goal, Goal 1.1, because as you think about ensuring student mastery, you have to train your teachers enough to have a professional development plan. So I think it's just pushed, like I said, we get into more detail, you'll see that there, but we're making a note to spell that...
You're saying that's an action plan?
It becomes part of the action.
Okay, I'm getting this.
That we're providing quality professional development, but part of the issue also for us in the past is we haven't monitored that, but we have provided outstanding professional development, but it's monitoring what happens to people back to their buildings.
Along with the Smart Goal 1.3, which is implementation of whatever curriculum we have, through whatever process we choose and select, that the teachers are trained and qualified and have fidelity associated with it in addition. So that's just something that I did not see, that I wanted to make sure, at least put out there. I had something else and now I don't remember where it was.
So you're going to take all our feedback incorporated, drill it down to the action plan, and then bring it back to us in November 29th?
I'm going to take your feedback and we're going to place it into the document. Now, do you collectively, it's kind of like thought exchange, it might be here, where is the team, you're going to meet in the middle, say, this is what we are pairing this down to.
When will we get your team's feedback after you receive our feedback? Or the revised feedback to the...
I would like to eat some Thanksgiving dinner. Our goal is to have it to, like I said, to present it to you on November 29th at the board meeting.
Will we see it before then?
We will do our best. I just, I'm just being honest.
I want you to have a Thanksgiving dinner as well.
Of what we told staff is to take, I've told staff, and I want to model that by not pressing on people, is to take care of themselves next week, to exercise self-care and exercise time, spending time with their family and loved ones. And so that's why I'm saying, that's why we wanted from you by next Tuesday, so we can kind of work on it before Thanksgiving really kicks in.
Yeah.
And then when we get together on Monday, the 28th, we will spend that day going through what we missed, but people will work on it at their leisure throughout the break.
Perfect.
As long as we meet our deadline, you get it out quicker to us, and we'll have that opportunity.
We'll do our best to get it out to you as soon as possible, yes.
Thank you.
Shreeda, did you remember?
Yes. So when, looking at the stakeholder engagement major themes again, and looking at like number, let's look at number six perhaps, which has improved academic performance and narrow focus simplify, I guess, education, which, you know, Jim kind of highlighted multiple times as a theme that came up multiple times. My only concern about that, and not concern, and also, I guess it goes along with number four, define what characteristics SPS graduates should possess post-graduation. I like that idea in theory, however, I want to make sure that it is broad enough to include diverse student needs. You know, I know that there was something said, like on the DESI standards, that the goal of the DESI standards, learning standards, is to make sure that every student is prepared for college or workforce or to be citizens in our communities. So we, you know, I want to make sure that whenever we talk about these characteristics, that we're not just talking about students who will be going to college, but we also have characteristics that include students who will be making other paths for themselves, so that it's broad enough to include all those students, but also narrow enough to be measured and observable.
Like it says here, college or career-ready.
Or career-ready.
I like the career-ready because that does, I think, encompass a lot of, not everyone does go to college, I mean, that includes military as well.
Most people don't go to college.
Is there anything you think is left out of that?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it was highlighted as a theme. And just, you know, kind of like everybody was kind of highlighting some of the things that they thought are important. For me, that one was important, that we make sure that we are developing goals and plans that are inclusive of lots of different options for students.
I'd like to point out one thing, are you done, sorry?
The last one was number seven, that talks about improved student behavior and effective discipline practices. I think, and I could be wrong, I think part of the issue may not just be student behavior, and again, you know, I am not a SPS teacher, but I do spend a lot of time with SPS kids. And I think what we need to focus on is having clear practices and policies regarding discipline and follow-through at building level. And I think part of that comes back to, you know, what Jim talked about with some of the concerns about building-level leaders, some doing their own thing, some doing what the district has planned for them. So I think that whole fidelity about not just curriculum but other initiatives at the school level is important, including discipline. And so just wanted to say that, you know, the behavior issues, I don't know that we want to make our teachers responsible for teaching kids how to, you know, to try to, you know, parent kids, you know, they have to teach kids. And so, what's important is that we have policies and practices in place that are followed consistently so that the teachers can have the time to teach and not trying to be spending time on discipline in the classroom.
That's the exact topic that I was going to point out. When I read through the thought exchange, I just wanted to bring this up as we all go back and go into our own version of this on our own, to provide feedback, is, when I read through that thought exchange and all the data, I mean, there were 59 pages of, I think, about 50 responses each to those thoughts that were rated, and I read most, almost all of them, like, 59 pages worth. And the one thing that was absolutely clear to me that there is total, I shouldn't say total, but near consensus on across the district and the various stakeholders, is behavior and behavior slash discipline type issues. And there's a lot of other stuff in there that's kind of hard to place, you know, where people pro this, con that, it gets it a little bit more divided after that, but that is the one thing that it seems like everyone is pointing to that we need to be doing better at. And I think that we should take a big swing at that in the strategic plan.
Ditto.
Danielle?
I need more time to process.
Same here. Do you guys have anything before we jump on mission and vision?
Do you just want to...
Right. I'll just say that, I guess the easiest way or the quickest way for me to say something is, I would just look back to our old mission statement and say we should do something similar to that. And if it ended up being that, or, so it was Springfield Public Schools exist for the academic excellence of all students, and I would maybe say, I guess I would propose that we think about re-adopting that as our mission statement and having all of this point towards that, except I would maybe put in this, isn't my idea, I think Maryam mentioned this to me once, maybe with a slight change of, rather, of changing all students to each student.
Personalized.
Making it a little bit more personal instead of a blanket approach.
Agreed.
I can't claim that idea, but, so I guess I'm saying, for the sake of simplicity or a place to start, I'll just throw that out there, if we had consensus to support that, I certainly would support it, unless there's other thoughts on a way to refine it.
I would like to refine it over time, not make a decision tonight.
Sure. I'm just starting the discussion.
I saw the word committed in there.
What's that?
We are committed?
Um, we already have our four commitments below it, it might...
And I want to clarify that. So we so often look at kids in groups and subgroups, that I just like to remember that I want to look at them as individuals, and that's really...
Yes.
Why I had mentioned that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that.
We've got to stop, I mean, we've got to start going, Steve, you want to?
I go along with Kelly with saying, especially to identify personally each student, and rather than saying all encompassing and that, I just like this, personalize that a little bit, because each student is different, and we should recognize each and every one.
So you're going to type your revised versions here in your document? Okay.
So in that document, we get to put the mission?
First, the first one that has the mission.
So tell me the difference between the mission and the vision.
So we have the current mission. You also have the current vision. So we're asking for your input. If it's back to the original with some added, additional words, that's fine also, but we're just asking you as a board to put them...
So I remember the old mission, but do you have the old vision?
Yes, I mean, well, it's right here.
Catalyst for lifelong learning.
Where is it?
Lifelong learning, equipping students for their futures.
No, I don't, that's now. No, I mean the one before, the one that we voted on. I remember the mission, I just read it. But what's the vision?
I don't know.
Serve as a catalyst for lifelong learning. Equipping students for their futures. That is the current...
No, the one before.
Did the vision change when we changed our mission?
Yeah. They said, Stephen said, no, it did not. Oh, he doesn't know, okay.
Oh, I think we just changed the vision.
You're saying we don't, we would have to go check, we'll check on that for you, okay?
But I would also like, what are we thinking the difference is? What are we trying to accomplish with the mission?
Mission is your why. Vision is desired state.
Wait, say that again, mission is...
Mission is your why. Why do you exist? Why do we matter?
Why do we exist?
The why.
Mission is the why.
Vision is your desired state, forward-thinking, what you hope to be.
Right?
That was...
So that would be more where the commitment would live. Or mission would be we are, vision would be we're committed to.
Mission, we exist. That's a why.
Why we exist.
Yep.
We exist because...
Yes.
And vision is, this is what we want to be.
What we want to be. Desired state.
Did you want to walk us through your document?
No, just, I mean, I don't know that the...
The core vision, the mission, the personalized engagement.
The only thing that I thought, I guess it's worth pointing out on this, is to me, I saw, I saw a certain amount of organization here that kind of aligns with our organizational structure, is on the left side, you've kind of got academics, and on the right side, you've kind of got operations. And that seems to go hand in hand with how we would want to strategize in accomplishing the goals. Other than that, you can, I guess, read it on your own and see that it's very close to what you, I mean, basically four goals, and then most of the objectives that they provided, plus maybe one other.
So did you include all the objectives here?
Yeah, so, oh, so the parentheses after each, under the, where it says ABC, so those would be the smart goals that we received from EGL.
So all, what, 10? He had 10 of them?
All 10 are in there, I think I added one, and it says on there in parentheses what page it was on the slide of the presentation. And a couple of those might be slightly reworded, that was just my personal preference, but the intent of what it was saying in those, in those smart goals are all here, living underneath.
So are your smart goals more like governing priorities? What you have is a smart goal, you're thinking governing...
Yeah, so I took the, I took the governing objective, because I really liked the way that those were worded versus, I guess, the smart goal language in the matrix. So I took those governing objectives and plugged those in.
Well, it puts an emphasis on behavior as its own. Thank you.
So on the, on the wrap things up...
We can attach this to your, we'll attach this to the document that we'll share once we consolidate. Think easily, they won't be the uploads, if you don't like your email.
And it's really just an example, it's not saying, obviously I hadn't seen this yet, so it's not this or this, I'm just, it was more an idea of putting everything into a different structure, which we accomplished here too, so it's just my thoughts.
I have a question. On this form, if we go in and fill it in, something else, we think of something else before the 22nd, can we go back in and change what we've completed, or is it a one-time forms done and it's done?
I think you go back in and you create a new form, right? Am I saying that wrong? Do you have another layer to actually run down there?
No, if I just think of something, if I go in and complete this and then day later I think, oh, we've got something else. Okay. Oh, so we can go and revise it?
And they go back to their original or they create a new one?
I create a original, I create a...
What, you hit submit, you can't go back?
You just submit another one.
Okay.
And I will try to put it all down on paper and then...
You'll know it's us, or do we have to put our name each other?
You'll know because it tags you by your email, that's how we'll get, generate the names, to say, you can see who said what.
Okay, I think before we wrap up, we still have a couple messages. Any last questions you have of Dr. Hudson? He's sitting here so patiently. Any last questions of him?
If we could, board members, by 3 o'clock next Tuesday, so can we edit also what time we need, if you can have it finished by 3:00 PM? Not Wednesday, Tuesday.
Big red letters for it.
Wednesday.
A big red reminder on there, run it back by Tuesday at 3:00. Sometimes we get busy and forget.
We'll send you a reminder. It will also be linked in the Friday update.
Okay.
Yeah, we can have a Friday update.
Okay, so...
Tammy found the previous mission prior to eight years ago?
So what happened was, it was pointed out that our district did not, our website was not in alignment with what our current strategic plan said, so we did the provisions about policy. So prior to it being prepare all students for tomorrow by providing engagement and relevant personalized educational resources today, it was Springfield Public Schools exist for the academic excellence of all students.
That's the mission. But I was asked about the vision.
So what happened was, it was pointed out that our district did not, our website was not in alignment with what our current strategic plan said, so we had the provisions about policy, so prior to it being prepare all students for tomorrow by providing engaging, relevant, personalized education with the purpose of today, it was Springfield Public Schools exist for the academic excellence of all students.